Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the special town meeting of June 23, 2021. I'm Eugene Cushman. I'm the town meeting moderator. If you could all stand, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbelied, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Tom Clerk, if you could read the call, please.
Town of East Lime, notice of special town meeting. Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the Town of East Lime to be held on June 23, 2021, at 7:00 PM at the East Lime Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to a resolution entitled "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $680,000 for the Acquisition of a New Fire Engine and Authorizing the Issuance of $680,000 Bonds" of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for such Purpose. Two, to consider and act upon a resolution entitled "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $680,000 for the Acquisition of a New Fire Engine and Authorizing the Issuance of $680,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for such Purpose. Three, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to a resolution entitled "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $850,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads and Authorizing the Issuance of $850,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for such Purpose. Four, to consider and act upon a resolution entitled "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $850,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads and Authorizing the Issuance of $850,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for such Purpose. Five, to receive communications from the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance with respect to a resolution entitled "Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $1,017,000 for the Various Board of Education Capital Improvements and Authorizing the Issuance of $1,017,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriations and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for such Purpose. Six, to consider and act upon a resolution entitled "Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating $1,017,000 for the Various Board of Education Capital Improvements and Authorizing the Issuance of $1,017,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriations and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for such Purpose. Seven, to consider and act upon a special appropriation for the following projects in CNRE Fund 32, which are consistent with the 2021-2022 Capital Improvement Plan. CNRE municipal project, town projects roof, $10,000. HVAC replacement townwide, $15,000. East Lime Watford Boat Motor, $8,500. Townwide sidewalk repairs, $10,000. Townwide servers, $5,000. Revaluation, $85,380. CAD software and survey equipment, $4,000, for a total of $137,880. Eight, to consider and act upon a special appropriation in the amount of $85,000 to be used as follows. $60,000, townwide parking lot repairs, resealing. $15,000, maintenance of town-owned dams. And $10,000, town-owned bridge culvert repairs, with the source of funds being the LoCIP program and accounts to be established, titled with the state project number. These projects are consistent with the 2021-2020, I'm sorry, 2020-2021 Capital Improvement Plan. Nine, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting. Copy of the proposed bond resolutions are on file and open to public inspection at the office of the town clerk. And this was recorded in the town clerk's office, posted on the signpost, and advertised in the day paper.
Thank you, Madam Tom Clerk. And Madam Tom Clerk, if you will make note for the record, please, that we have received the communication referred to in item 1, 3, and 5. As usual, I'll go over quickly the ground rules for our town meeting. Under Connecticut General Statute 7-6, you must be an elector of the town or 18 years of age, a U.S. citizen and own property on the grand list of 10, 1, 20, in the amount of $1,000 or more. Under Connecticut General Statute 9-360, any person who votes but is not eligible to vote may be subject to a fine of not less than $300, no more than $500, imprisoned for not less than one year, no more than two years, disenfranchised, or all of the above. Anyone that wishes to speak, please come to the podium and give your name and address for the record. Please do not conduct dialogues amongst yourself. Any questions you have, please direct it through the moderator. If you are not eligible to vote but wish to speak, please make that fact known before you speak. You may approve an expenditure, you may reduce an expenditure, but you may not move to increase an expenditure. If needed, I will appoint the registrar, teller, and checker. We will take items in the order of the call. And so the first item that we're going to consider is item number two. To consider and act upon a resolution entitled "The Resolution Making of an Appropriation in the Amount of $680,000 for the Acquisition of a New Fire Engine and Authorizing the Issuance of $680,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowing for such Purpose." Do I hear a resolution?
So move.
Mr. Siri, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hardy. Would anyone like to speak to this matter just for a second?
Thank you, Mr. Cushman. This is our first town meeting back at Town Hall. Welcome all. There are seats available if you need to find a seat. Not that I'm making you, but it's a nice crowd that we have here tonight. The first item that we're speaking of is the $680,000 for the fire truck. We are replacing a 31-year-old fire truck. It's a pumper truck that rests down here at the Niantic Fire Station. By the time, two years goes by, by then we put our order in and actually received the truck, two more years will go by, so it'll be a 33-year-old truck. These trucks are designed to last 20 to 25 years. We get the most out of our fire trucks, and that's because we take extra care. Our men and women of the fire services take extra care and take care of our equipment. Our tax dollars pay for this. The Chief Baron is here this evening. If anyone has any specific questions on the truck, otherwise, please know that the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance fully vetted this, like all things on our agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First Clerk. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, then we'll remove the question. All those in favor of a resolution making an appropriation of $680,000 for the acquisition of a new fire engine and authorizing the issuance of $680,000 bond of the Town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it, the resolution carries. The next item on the agenda is item number four. To consider and act upon a resolution entitled "Resolution Making an Appropriation in the Amount of $850,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads and Authorizing the Issuance of $850,000 Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowing for such purposes." Do I hear a resolution?
So move.
Mr. Siri, is there a second?
Second.
I didn't see what that was. John, yes. Would anyone like to be heard? Mr. First Selectman.
Mr. Moderator, thank you again. $850,000 to repair our roads. We have a program where we have every road in town. There's 120 miles of roads in this town, just under that, and we maintain them. And if you keep maintaining them at the proper time, you don't have to dig them up and redo them, which is 10 times the cost. $850,000, we had been spending about $1 million a year over the last decade or so. We're at 850, and I'm pleased to report that that number will start to go down to the $600,000 figure in the next couple of years. There's plenty of roads to maintain in this town, and our very able Joe Brigar, our Public Works Director, is here to answer any specific questions. Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. First Clerk. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, we'll remove the question. All those in favor of a resolution making an appropriation in the amount of $850,000 for the Rehabilitation of Various Town Roads and authorizing the issuance of an $850,000 bond of the Town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purposes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. The ayes have it, the resolution carries. The next item on the agenda is to consider and act upon a resolution entitled "Resolution Making an Appropriation of $1,017,000 for Various Board of Education Capital Improvements and Authorizing the Issuance of a $1,017,000 Bond of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowing for such Purpose." Is there a resolution?
So move.
Mr. Siri, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cunningham. Would anyone like to be heard on this resolution?
My name is Mike Mondello. I live at 12 Black Oak Drive, East Lime, Connecticut. I'm not sure what else to do. I'm not sure how I found myself involved. My wife's the one who really wanted to be involved. My wife wrote, has been trying to deal with the East Lime Board. It's very difficult to get on the agenda, and at a meeting, a couple of meetings ago, someone called her an anti-Semite and a racist. It was picked up by the New London Day newspaper, and then it was again put in everybody's mailbox on the East Lime Times, right before graduation. I have a daughter at that school. I have a wife. She couldn't listen to the radio program I was on this morning for an hour, from 9:00 to 10:00 on the Lee Elsie Show with my friend Wade Jensen, the three catchers, the three of us. It's unbelievable what's going on over there, and there is nothing that you can do to control it. They're like-minded, they're impossible to get into these meetings, you have to write a letter, submit it by noon, and then they have time to have it publicized in the New London Day and call you names. The only leverage we have is money. Money is speech. This is a million-dollar budget, it's a drop in the bucket, a message needs to be sent to the superintendent and the board that this will not stand in our town. It's unbelievable the things that they've been adding. It's not really just about this. The stuff that's going in, this is, this just got approved, if I can find it. 12 pages, okay? This got approved, BOE approved 4/5/2021. I'll give you the definition of racism. Racism is a complex system of beliefs and behaviors grounded in a presumed superiority of the white race. I'll repeat that again. Racism is a complex system of beliefs and behaviors grounded in the presumed superiority of the white race. These beliefs and behaviors are conscious, unconscious. Excuse me, I'm trying to control my anger. I cannot tell you how upset I am. I'm just trying to control my anger because of what they did to my wife and my daughter, but I'll calm, I'll calm down. These beliefs and behaviors are conscious and unconscious, personal, institutional, and resulted in the oppression of people of color and benefit the dominant group, whites. A simpler definition is racial prejudice plus power equals racism. On a prior board meeting on July 13, the group came in, they were allowed to have 23 minutes. They didn't have to submit a letter, they didn't have to do anything. One of the college students said this, this was July 23. You can find it on the Zoom, YouTube for the board. This is about after four minutes, they let the college student talk. He said, reporter from the Day newspaper here, numerous community members are in attendance, and your responses to tonight's proposals will be made well-known. And the board complimented it. And my wife wrote a letter, it was read. I went to the board meeting, just sat there quietly, last board meeting, which was Monday. And after doing all that, she wrote a letter. I'm writing today for two reasons. The first is to say that I can see that this board generally cares about trying to do their best for the students of East Lime, and I really appreciate that, and the effort that the board puts into this school. I believe that every person, and especially every child, is a unique and valuable person that deserves to be treated as an individual. As a tax-paying town resident, I get to state my objections to any of this board's decisions, policies, and expenditures. At the May 24, 2021 East Lime Board of Education meeting, board members and Superintendent Newton made unfounded, deeply hurtful, and defamatory attacks on me about my objection to a board decision. I am requesting that these allegations be immediately retracted by this board and administration. Sincerely, Elizabeth Mondello. She zoomed in. Crickets at that meeting. I was there from the beginning till the end of the board meeting on Monday. I just sat there in the front row, looking kind of like this, okay? So if anybody would like, I don't, this is totally separate. If you want me to read the letter that my wife wrote, I'm happy to read it, but it has nothing to do with anything else. And if you want me to read it, I'll read it. If you don't, I'll sit down.
Well, Mr. Mondello, we're talking about this appropriation and...
I think we should not appropriate this money to send a clear message to the school. The money is the only speech we have, it's the only control we have. The board needs to understand that they work at the taxpayer's behest, not the other way around, and there is no reason that they need to be appropriating this money. Furthermore, this is an iPhone. This is an old iPhone. There's two other new models that come out that cost less, year after year. We've realized in this COVID environment that we've had technology adoption that's about 10 years in the field I'm in, I've noticed, in one year. There is no reason why education can't be improved, just like this, year over year, and school budgets can be reduced out of savings to the taxpayers. There's no reason for, this is a small amount, this budget's over $50 million. A million dollars to send the message that the board shouldn't do that is small. Then we can get to part two of reducing the education budget and improving educational outcomes. You know, if adults want to use this kind of theory and talk among themselves and act this way, that's fine. But children should not be seen in first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade that some children, because of their skin color, are oppressors, and other children are victims. Both of those things have serious, long-term impacts, different ones, but serious, long-term impacts on children. These are children, and they're our children. They're our grandchildren. They don't belong to the school, and they don't belong to the board. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mondello. Would anyone else like to be heard on this issue? Ms. Mann.
I wasn't planning to speak, but... Frederica Gunther, 123 Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic. I'm all aware of that situation. I also wrote a letter. I thank you for coming here and expressing that. I will vote against this also for many of the reasons, same reasons. I find the Board of Education totally not responsive. It's a mixed Republican, Democrats. They are totally supporting this critical race theory, which is very in the news if you watch certain stations. If you watch some other stations, you might not hear it, but a lot of people in town aren't aware of it. The document that you spoke of is one where I believe a very radical group is going to be involved in the school system, backed by Black Lives Matter. It comes, it's another, I think it's SCOR they're called now. They're going to be extremely involved, according to the document, in the curriculum and in hiring also, according to the document, if it's improved after the Equity Institute of Rhode Island, equity, which isn't a great word. And I know Holly, the state of Connecticut, I've been trying to get hold of you, by the way, the state of Connecticut has also approved something with the critical race theory. It shouldn't be a political thing. It's about our children, it's about our grandchildren, it's about them not being told that you're white and you're racist. And that's what it is, that's what the program is. It's all over national news, if you watch Fox News, which, this is a very liberal, I guess liberal town, I don't know, but it's a liberal state. I think some of those liberal people that voted against the past president that we had, because they hated him so much, now are the same ones in Greenwich and different towns that are going to these meetings, extremely upset about what's going on with this critical race theory. It's a very racist program. It's going to be instituted in East Lime, the state of Connecticut. Holly can speak to that, has approved something regarding that. Old Lime tried to put through their selectmen, thank God they had brain in their head there, in order to make racism a health issue, or I think it's what it was. It's crazy. What's going on is crazy. I'm very disappointed with the East Lime Board of Ed at this point. I actually saw the meeting on YouTube, I guess, where they read our letters. The way my letter was read, it was ridiculous. I mean, a third grader could have read it better. They have instituted this in a time of the pandemic, when parents are home with their kids, trying to juggle work, trying to juggle everything. They're getting 100 emails and texts. They'd even know, half the people I talked to, and I've talked to a lot, were trying to form groups to battle this. There was a good article in the New London Day about it, which I'm surprised at, because the New London Day is a very liberal paper. So it's a big issue. So the Board of Ed, quite frankly, went both letters, and that letter was wonderful. It had a lot of great points in it. It was the first time I really heard the whole letter. It's horrible what's going on. It's going on in the whole United States. Unfortunately, it's turned into a political thing. The Republican states are banning critical race theory. It's even in the military. You know, there's a lot of dissension about that. These poor guys are losing legs and arms, and they gotta listen to this baloney. It's disgusting. So I wasn't going to speak, but I'm up in arms about this whole thing also. If anybody here is interested in it, we really are trying to get people together to go to the Board of Ed meetings. I don't even know how you got there, because you're right. They said, well, you can come and speak if you want on Monday, but you'll be escorted in and then out, and then you can watch it on Zoom or something. And I said, really? But you have to submit your letter. I go, well, why would I submit my letter if I'm going in person? So it just seems like they're putting things in, sneaking, sneaking things, and even the state of Connecticut. I had no idea that they were approving this. Called the governor's office, the kids didn't answer the phone, you'd think they would know something. Do you know anything about the critical race theory, anything? No, I don't know anything. Nothing. So there's a lot going on in this state and in this town, and people need to wake up. Because I, for one, don't want my grandchildren being told that they're racist and they have problems. There was a form that third and fourth graders had to fill out. They had to mark whether they're, they had all these choices. White, Asian, transsexual, gay, I don't know, all these different things for third and fourth graders. Are you kidding me? It's just disgusting. So I just felt I had to speak up, people need to be more aware. So I don't know. Totally disgusted and really worried about what's going on in this country, and now in East Lime. I'm shocked, really. You can't even go in person to the meetings. Graduation, just one more thing. Graduation in East Lime, they all had masks on. Watford, no masks. Groton, no masks. We had a bump-up ceremony for fourth graders outside, six feet apart, masks. The kids had masks, they couldn't even sing their song. Pathetic, really pathetic. So anyhow, sorry, I know it wasn't kind of appropriate for what we're doing tonight, but I thank you for speaking up, and we're trying to get people together to fight this. I know it's not going to do a darn bit of good at this point, but it's really disturbing what's going on. So I would vote against this also, just for that reason.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Would anyone else like to be heard? Ms. Newton?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have a handful of items that designates this $1,017,000 capital improvement list. Air handlers, number one, we have air handlers at the high school and middle school that are beyond their life, and it's time to begin a cycle of replacement of those air handlers. That constitutes 150,000 at the high school and one at the middle school, 200,000. We have sidewalk repairs that need to be, that need to take place, safety issues, crumbling sidewalk areas. We have some exterior masonry items as well with crumbling brick, which need to be replaced. We have parking lot and driveway ceiling and maintenance repair that also needs to take place at the high school. We're starting some design studies on wing, A-wing window replacement, as well as some exterior door replacement components as well at the high school. We've completed our elementary schools with the renovations, and now time to start looking slowly at the middle school and the high school. The top of the south gym, there's peeling paint all around the top of that, that needs to be sandblasted and redone. It's been that way for a few years now, and it's time to take care of that issue. We have roof life extension components is the last one, both at the high school and the middle school. The roofs are coming of age. We have an opportunity to extend the life of the roof by about 20 years if we do this membrane and sections of the roof. So we don't want to have to be paying for a new roof. This would extend the life of the current roofs at the high school and the middle school at a much cheaper cost, cost-effective mechanism for the town and for the Board of Ed. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Would anyone else like to be heard? Ms. Hardy.
I'm Ms. Anne Hardy, 6 Silverbrook Road, and also a member of the Board of Selectmen. Two previous speakers, the two previous speakers had some very serious objections to spending this money, and I'd like to ask the superintendent if any of the money that's being appropriated this evening will go towards supporting the cause that they are very concerned about.
Ms. Newton, would you respond?
Not for capital improvement items, no.
Okay. So for these individuals who came here tonight to speak about their concerns, I'd like to ask the superintendent if he would advise these people as to how their concerns might be addressed, because eliminating the money as they're suggesting this evening really would not impact what the schools are planning to do with the critical race theory and their concerns about that. So if the superintendent wouldn't mind addressing this to clarify for these people how they can go about getting their concerns addressed rather than eliminating the money to support these capital improvement projects.
Mr. Newton first.
Oh, yeah, I'm happy to meet with you. I'll stick out at any point.
I'll just say one thing, I think... I don't know...
Frederica Gunther again. I'm not sure with capital improvement, but I know when I was on the Board of Ed in Watford, I know you have line item discretion. So if all this money is being used, is this from the COVID relief money? Is that what it is? Is that what it is?
No.
Oh, it isn't? Okay, it's something else? Okay. All right. Well, at any rate, they do have line item discretion, and there's no need to meet with us. I mean, it's kind of a dumb deal. I think it's deplorable, disgusting, and I think the more parents are aware of it, the more they're going to speak up. So that's it, and they are slowly getting the best of it. But you do, they do have line item discretion in the Board of Ed.
I'm happy to meet with you. When can we do it?
We'll talk after the meeting.
Oh, we can't schedule it now?
No.
Okay. Okay, not, just want everybody to see that. That's fine. Oh, well, just, just wanted to be clear.
This is the first, yeah, first...
Yeah. You didn't read my wife's letters in the, please. Okay, no, no, I'm going. I'm a financial guy. I'm very familiar with money. Money is fungible.
But I don't want you arguing with anyone.
That's fine, I won't. He said he wanted to meet, and he didn't. That's fine. Money's fungible, period.
Money's fungible, period. I think all of those things that Superintendent Newton said to do should be done. The town doesn't need to borrow money to do it. There's a 50-some-odd-million-dollar budget that's available to do those things. He's the superintendent. He can figure out where to get the money from in the budget.
Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, sir. Come to the party, please.
My name is Richard Waterman. I have a long experience in this town, 30 years teaching in it. And I have been listening to what is being said in the community. And I'm questioning a lot of what I hear. Recently, I came upon a document that was developed in the year 2015, which had been approved by the Connecticut State Department of Education and was created and worked upon by 25 towns in this state, plus three universities, plus other people. They had developed a curriculum plan, which is to be used as a guide by towns. Notice I weren't using the word "guide." So towns would be free to develop the type of curriculum which would best suit our community. I do not believe personally that this is a racist town. But I do believe that it is important for students to learn the truth. What I would suggest is that I would like to give this document to the superintendent and let him present it to the Board of Education to see what they think of it. Because, as I said before, it allows the town to develop a curriculum which meets the needs of every child. And I think it's something that should be considered by the board before they move forward in doing something which they may later regret. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waterman.
Do you mind if I say one more?
One more time.
I know. I just want everybody to be aware that the critical race theory, the money for the town, federal money, and I believe state money, is tied to the fact that if you have to have this in order to get those monies. I'm pretty sure that's the thing. Biden has said that federal money, you have to have critical race theory. And there's a difference between educating children, whether it be Native Americans, Asians, the slavery prop, any of that. That's a whole different story. I think we can all agree that's a great thing. This is kind of a separate thing. And a lot of times, the two issues get a little bit mixed up. There's a discrepancy about the real history. That's a whole nother subject. But I think what we're most concerned is right now is having our kids indoctrinated, these little kids being taught that something's wrong with them. And I think that's the most important issue we have to deal with right now. But there are monies tied to these two things.
Thank you, Ms. Gunther. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, then remove the question. A resolution making appropriation of 1,017,000 dollars for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of a 1,017,000 dollar bond for the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purposes. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
Note one nay.
Put two down.
Two nays. The resolution carries. The next item on the agenda is to consider and act upon a special appropriation for the following CNRE fund. And for those who don't know it, CNRE means Capital Non-Recurring Account, which are considered with the 2021-2022 Capital Improvement Plan. CNRE municipal projects. Town projects, roofs, $10,000. HVAC replacement, townwide, $15,000. Eastline Waterford Boat Motor, $8,500. Townwide sidewalk repairs, $10,000. Sidewalk servers, $5,000. Reevaluation, $85,380. CAD software and survey equipment, $4,000, for a total of $137,880. Do I hear a resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Serry, is there a second?
Second.
You have a, Ms. Cheeseman. Would anyone like to be heard? Mr. First Election.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Very simply, these items were in our budget that we all voted for the third week of May. And now we're taking that money and putting it in the appropriate places. These items are savings accounts for when we need an emergency roof repair or the town server goes down. We need to replace that. We also put money away for it to accumulate. So things like sidewalks. The revow, instead of hitting the taxpayers in one year for a $250,000, $300,000 price tag, we spread it out over five years. And that way, it doesn't blow one year's budget. That's what we're doing here tonight. All these items were approved already by referendum last month.
Thank you, Ms. First Election. Would anyone else like to be heard? Seeing no hands, then remove the question. For a special appropriation for the following projects for CNRE Fund 32, which are consistent of the 2021-2022 Capital Improvement Plan. CNRE municipal projects. Town project roofs, $10,000. HVAC replacement, townwide, $15,000.